Welcome to this meeting in the Orange County School Board. We are so thrilled to have a full room tonight. This is really that time of year where we get to recognize some of the accomplishments of our students and our teachers. Tonight, we have one very special teacher to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and Moment of Silence, and that is Ms. Danielle Miller, who has just awarded a Regional Magnet School Teacher of the Year Award. She teaches at University High School, and I'd like to invite at this time Ms. Miller up to the podium to lead us in the pledge and the moment of silence, and then we're going to brag on her a little bit.[34.54][34.54](APPLAUSE).
Will you please stand and bow your heads for a moment of silence? Thank you. And now the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
Ms. Miller, if you could stay there for a moment. We do want to brag on Ms. Miller for a moment here. She is not only the Magnet School of America Regional Teacher of the Year, which is a very, very big deal, but was also a district finalist for Orange County Teacher of the Year in 2015-16. Ms. Miller is particularly gifted in making the wonders of space and space travel very real in her classroom. I started to read "time travel." I'm like, wow, we've come a long way.
We're getting there.
I realized it was space travel. Time travel would be cool, though. At University High, she is also the Global Technologies Magnet Program Coordinator. She has sponsored her school's all-female robotics team and the Girls in Engineering, Math, and Science Club, and is a father of two daughters. Thank you for that, because we need to encourage more young women to go into science and to math and STEM fields. She has created numerous connections with NASA, which assists her in enhancing her curriculum. We are honored that she is with us tonight, because it is also Teacher Appreciation Week. And today is actually Teacher Appreciation Day for our nearly 13,000 Orange County public school teachers. So on behalf of the board, Mrs. Miller and the administration, we want to say thank you very, very much for all the amazing work you do for our children every day in our classrooms. And, audience members, you should know that she also, with several other employees, just returned from Los Angeles, where the Magnet Schools of America Annual Awards Ceremony was held. And we are proud to say that as a result of that award ceremony, we brought home 10 additional awards, along with Ms. Miller's award. Magnet Schools of America is a national association for magnet and theme-based schools, and I'm going to go ahead and read them, because sometimes speaking it from the mountaintop speaks volumes. And we do televise these, and I want everybody watching to know how special these schools are and the recognitions they've received. An Award of Excellence won to the Dual Language Enrichment Program at Hunters Creek Elementary School. The IB Middle Schools Program at College Park Middle School also won the Award of Excellence, along with the World Language Academy at Lakeview Middle School, the Center for International Studies at Dr. Phillips High School, the Global Technologies Program at University High School, the International Baccalaureate at University High School or IB Program. And winning awards of distinction were the Middle School Six to Eight Option at Arbor Ridge School, the Academy for Visual and Performing Arts at Howard Middle School, the Junior Achievement Academy of Leadership and Entrepreneurship at Oak Ridge High School, and the Visual and Performing Arts at Dr. Phillips High School. And none of these awards that our schools have garnered and the recognition they bring us would never have been possible were it not for gifted teachers like Ms. Miller. So, Ms. Miller, we want to give you a round of applause and say thank you.[257.12][257.12](APPLAUSE). And the board would like to shake their hands, too. So, as I mentioned a moment ago, and as promised at the last board meeting, today is Teacher Appreciation Day, and it is part of Teacher Appreciation Week, which goes through May 8th through May 12th. And I've asked our vice chair, Ms. Linda Cobert, to read the proclamation on behalf of Orange County Public Schools for Teacher Appreciation Week. Ms. Cobert?
Gladly. Thank you, Chair. Proclamation: Teacher Appreciation Week. Whereas the School Board of Orange County deeply appreciates and values the hard work and commitment of its 13,831 teachers. And whereas the vision of Orange County Public Schools is to be the top producer of successful students in the nation. And whereas the district's vision for student success is dependent on our teachers. And whereas the district's teachers shape and mold the minds of more than 203,000 students from 200 countries who speak 167 languages. And whereas our teachers lead our students to success through education and guidance, spending countless hours preparing lessons, evaluating progress, counseling and coaching students, and performing community service. And whereas our country's future depends on providing a high-quality public education to all students, for which teachers are the key. And whereas our community recognizes and supports teachers educating the children of Orange County. And whereas our partners in education businesses have contributed $1,076,798 in resources to show support for our teachers across Orange County and part of the superintendent's celebration of teachers. Now, therefore, let it be resolved that the School Board of Orange County proclaims May 8th through 12th, 2017, to be Teacher Appreciation Week. And be further resolved that the School Board of Orange County strongly encourages all administrators, support staff, parents, and members of our community to join together in expressing appreciation to our teachers for their dedication and devotion to their work with our children. Thank you.[436.62][436.62](APPLAUSE).
So I have the distinct privilege and honor of sitting beside a very distinguished teacher who keeps me on my toes for the last seven years. And if you ever come to our meetings, you know how literal I mean that. I'd like to ask her and all of our teachers in this room, please stand and let us give you a round of applause, please. Mrs. Gordon?[460.12][460.12](APPLAUSE). And I want to recognize that all of our teachers are very special teachers, but I also want to recognize a teacher who gives so much of herself outside of the classroom that is Ms. Wendy Dormall, who's our union president. Thank you, Ms. Dormall. Stand up, Wendy, and let us recognize you one more time.[486.62][486.62](APPLAUSE). We have a tremendous relationship with our unions, and Wendy, I cannot overstate this enough, Wendy is a very large reason for that relationship, and we appreciate you immensely. She's a tenacious fighter for teachers, and as she should be, but she's a lady, and she's always professional, and she's always just a joy to deal with. So Wendy, we really do appreciate you very, very much. You know, it's Mother's Day on Sunday, and as my wife loves to tell me when it's Mother's Day, well, nice words are nice, but they're nice, but chocolate is better.[521.54][521.54](LAUGHTER). So, in that vein, our Community Resources Office has secured from very nice giveaways and gifts for our teachers, from our Partners in Education. Our Partners in Education are the literally, I always lose count of the businesses, I think it's over 4,000 businesses here in Orange County that support Orange County Public Schools. So I'm going to kick it over to Dr. Barbara Jenkins to talk about some of the very nice gifts, or the equivalent of chocolate, that we have for our teachers. Dr. Jenkins?
Thank you, Chairman. Certainly, we are very appreciative of all of our instructional team. Our teachers are simply the finest in the country. And so, thanks to our Partners in Education, I would love to list a few items that every teacher will be receiving, and then I'll mention a couple of prizes that teachers are entering for drawings. WonderWorks is providing tickets, free access, those are $30 value tickets, by the way. Yogurtland, Main Event Entertainment, Buffalo Wild Wings, Sunny's Barbecue, Domino's, and Panda Express are all providing something for every one of our 13,831 teachers. That's about $75 worth of prizes. And then, they can actually enter into drawings for additional prizes. There are several, including a drawing for an autographed Magic Basketball, hotel stays from several of our Central Florida Hotel and Lodging Association partners, tickets to Walt Disney World, tickets to Blue Man Group, lots of gift cards, including cards from Barnes &amp; Noble, gift bags, and sweet desserts. So teachers received an email where they simply had to click on and put their name in, so they could be eligible for the drawings, but the first $75 worth of incentives go to every one of our wonderful teachers. Congratulations to all of them as we celebrate Teacher Appreciation Week. And I would add my commendations to a very fine Teacher Association President, Ms. Dormall.[638.04][638.04](APPLAUSE).
I have to chuckle at members of the audience up here, because my board never knows where I'm going with something. When I said the Mother's Day thing, they all took a cluck of gas. It's like, oh, gosh, what is he going to say? But that's our chocolate for you, our teachers. Thank you very, very much for all you do for our kids. We are in the final month of the 2016-17 school year, and tonight, we are taking the opportunity to recognize some of our seniors and their accomplishments. And these students we're about to recognize have worked so incredibly hard over the, not just this year, but throughout their academic career. In the boardroom, we have tonight with us graduates who are not only receiving their high school diploma this month, but also, and this is very, very special, we're extremely proud of y'all for doing this, an associate degree. Yes, a college associate's degree, two-year degree, this year. More than 30 graduating seniors, 35 in fact, from 13 Orange County high schools, have accomplished this dream. We offer dual enrollment as an acceleration program that allows eligible high school students to pursue post-secondary coursework. At Valencia College, we'll simultaneously earning credit toward high school completion. The students in our dual enrollment program have the opportunity to enroll in a combination of advanced placement courses, which earn college credit if they pass their exams, and Valencia College courses. The OCPS Valencia graduates we are recognizing tonight have completed enough college coursework to earn their AA degree, and it was free, which I know their parents probably appreciate an awful lot.[740.08][740.08](APPLAUSE). I got applause from the parents.[745.12][745.12](LAUGHTER). I will say, though, there really is no free lunch in life, and these students, each and every one of them, I hesitated to say it was free, because they've paid with the sweat of their brow and worked very, very hard. For those of you who have not been in college for a while, it takes 60 credit hours in college to earn an AA degree. And so these students have really worked very, very hard above and beyond our typical high school student. They've also completed all of their general education requirements, and they are ready to pursue their college majors. It's spectacular to see. In fact, we are so proud that the number of students who take advantage of this opportunity has grown so exponentially in the last few years. I can remember a few years ago, I think we only had a handful of four or five of these students, and now we're up to 30, 35 students. So really, kudos to y'all. Also joining us tonight, and I'm going to invite her to the podium to say a few words, is Valencia College Director of Dual Enrollment, Dr. Letitia Lewis. And we'd like to welcome Dr. Lewis to the podium to present students with their stools. And after that, we will name the students by high school. We understand that not every student was able to be here this evening. After all, it is the last day of high school for some seniors today. Wow, that snuck up on me. I didn't realize today was the last day for some of our seniors. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Lewis, and then after she speaks, we're going to recognize you and have you shake Dr. Lewis's hand and shake our hands. Dr. Lewis, thank you for offering this.
Thank you. Yes, thank you so much. I am so glad that I was invited to share this moment with students. When I'm invited to senior ceremonies, award ceremonies, I often think about, what was my high school experience like? And I know, for me, I had a lot of fun in high school. I was definitely not as focused as these students that are going to be acknowledged today. To obtain an associate's degree and a high school diploma at the same time, that is quite an accomplishment. Your hard work has paid off, and again, it's such an honor to be here today to help recognize you. So yearly, we have about 4,000 students that apply to participate in dual enrollment, and only about half of those students actually meet the requirements to participate in dual enrollment. So that's a 50/50 chance of students that actually meet the requirements. And the students tonight, not only did you meet the requirements, you have exceeded the expectations that we had of you, because one of the main focuses of dual enrollment is for these students to complete their high school requirements. And again, you have gone far beyond that. So this year, we had 1,132 graduating seniors in the Orange County who participated in dual enrollment. And as stated before, only 35 students, only 35 students obtained their associate's degree. I know sometimes we have a hard time of patting ourselves on the back and acknowledging what we have done, but I definitely want you to know that this is truly an accomplishment. This is definitely something that you can Snapchat about.[944.75][944.75](LAUGHTER). You are exceptional, and on behalf of Valencia College, job well done.[952.82][952.82](APPLAUSE).
So at this time, I am going to call the students by name, and as I call you by name, please come to the front of the room and shake Dr. Lewis's hand, and then the board would also like to shake your hands as well. From Apopka High School, Lucas Kaplan.[976.01][976.01](APPLAUSE). Kara Legg.[978.01][978.01](APPLAUSE). And Garrett Outland.[980.01][980.01](APPLAUSE).
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations, Chair.
From Boone High School, Tyssa Torres Lorenzo.[985.01][985.01](APPLAUSE). Tyssa, did I say that right? Help me out here.[988.01][988.01](LAUGHTER). How do I pronounce your first name right?
Tyce.
Tyce, I'm sorry. Tyce Torres Lorenzo. From Cypress Creek High School. Oh, boy, I'm going to mutilate this one, I'm sorry. Shredevi Mutiela. Did I? Mutiela? Mutiela.[1000.51][1000.51](APPLAUSE). From Dr. Phillips High School, Antonio Fazalari.[1002.51][1002.51](APPLAUSE). From Edgewater High School, Cassandra Barron.[1004.51][1004.51](APPLAUSE). Destiny Campbell.[1006.51][1006.51](APPLAUSE). And Kaylin McGowey.[1008.51][1008.51](APPLAUSE). From Freedom High School, Nicholas Cooper.[1010.51][1010.51](APPLAUSE). Did I forget the last name right? Okay.
Congratulations.
And also from Freedom High School, Yasmin Shakur.[1015.51][1015.51](APPLAUSE). From Lake Nona High School, she couldn't be with us tonight, but Angela Avance.[1017.51][1017.51](APPLAUSE). And then Gustavo Borjas. Gustavo. Maricela Garcett.[1021.51][1021.51](APPLAUSE). Kimberly Medievilla. Medievilla.[1024.51][1024.51](APPLAUSE). Did I come close?[1026.51][1026.51](LAUGHTER).
Well done.
Congratulations. I'm so proud of you. Also from Lake Nona High School, Niti Patel.[1031.51][1031.51](APPLAUSE). Nisha Patel couldn't make it tonight, but also from Lake Nona High School, Miley Zarias. Miley's.[1034.51][1034.51](APPLAUSE). Carter Schaefer.[1036.51][1036.51](APPLAUSE). Carter, thanks for having an easy name.[1038.51][1038.51](LAUGHTER). And Emily Von Blon.[1040.51][1040.51](APPLAUSE). From Oak Ridge High School, Josima De La Rosa.[1042.51][1042.51](APPLAUSE). From McCoy High School, Christopher Rubio.[1044.51][1044.51](APPLAUSE). From Olympia High School, Alexandra Bonilla.[1046.51][1046.51](APPLAUSE). Also from Olympia High School, Valerie Castanada.[1048.51][1048.51](APPLAUSE). From Olympia, Daniel Lincoln.[1050.51][1050.51](APPLAUSE). From Olympia High School, Daniel Lacusa.[1052.51][1052.51](APPLAUSE).
Congratulations, good job.
Oh, yes, you did. Thank you. Thank you.[1057.51][1057.51](LAUGHTER). Daniel was telling me he had an easy name as well. We appreciate that, Daniel. Thank you. Also from Olympia High School, Yashoda Munna.[1062.51][1062.51](APPLAUSE). Juliana Sostre.[1064.51][1064.51](APPLAUSE). And Allison Kimoff.[1066.51][1066.51](APPLAUSE). From Timber Creek High School, Natalie Shen.[1068.51][1068.51](APPLAUSE). From Okeiva High School, Marina Cologne.[1070.51][1070.51](APPLAUSE). Also from Okeiva, Robert Martinez.[1072.51][1072.51](APPLAUSE). And from Okeiva High School, Americos Perez.[1074.51][1074.51](APPLAUSE).
Proud of you.
Good job.
Congratulations, thank you. And last but not least, from West Orange High School, Nehemiah Garcia.[1079.51][1079.51](APPLAUSE). Did I miss anybody? No. I do believe I failed to mention, she couldn't be with us tonight, but from Apopka High School, Kenley Richardson. I don't think I said Kenley, Ken.[1089.14][1089.14](APPLAUSE). So at this time, I'd also like to ask, to have stand, all the parents of these talented, hard-working, bright students. Behind every great student, there's a great support structure at home. So can I have their parents and loved ones of these students, please stand and let us recognize you for being such wonderful parents and mom and aunt.[1121.14][1121.14](APPLAUSE). And I would be remiss as well, especially since it's Teacher Appreciation Week, if I didn't ask any, do we have any of the teachers? And if there are any of the teachers of these students with us today, can you please stand as well? Any teachers here tonight?
Principals.
Or principals of these students? Principals?[1130.14][1130.14](APPLAUSE). Congratulations. Dr. Jenkins?
Thank you, Chairman. I wouldn't miss an opportunity to publicly say how proud we are of our students, our children. And I tell you, from the time they're in kindergarten to walking across that stage is just the blink of an eye. And I know every parent is extremely proud, and you're probably wondering where the time went. A lot of that time for these students went into studying, and staying up late some nights, and going the extra mile, and that means they had a lot of parental support as well. And so congratulations to all of our students, as well as to the parents. And thanks to Valencia and Dr. Lewis for being such strong partners, helping us get these students over the hurdle of an AA degree. It's certainly a tremendous accomplishment. We look forward to having even more in the future.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. And thank you for your leadership on this effort, Dr. Jenkins. It's grown, not by accident, but because your administration has pushed it, and this board has pushed it. Mrs. Robinson?
I just want to say, not only are these kids amazing, but our state is in good shape, because I asked all of them where they were headed, and almost all of them are going to one of our fabulous schools here in the state of Florida. We had Stetson in Miami, and UF, USF, UCF, FSU. We had Florida Gulf Coast, yeah, we had a couple outliers, we had Ohio State and Howard. And those are just ones I'm remembering. But anyway, I think if they all are going to our wonderful schools here in the state of Florida and continuing their education, they're going to be wonderful employees coming back. So keep OCPS in mind when you come back. We will be here for you. Congratulations, you guys are all amazing. Very proud, very proud.[1214.21][1214.21](APPLAUSE).
So again, congratulations. You should be very, very proud of what you've accomplished, and you have such a tremendous head start on your peers, on your college education, and we're incredibly proud of you and how well you've made OCPS look. There's still time to go get ice cream tonight, so we're going to pause and let you leave and get back to the last night of your academic careers tonight. Welcome, and I would thank you again for coming down here.[1230.33][1230.33](APPLAUSE).
This is all the blue garbage. Very good. Popcorn glass and iron bowls. A long, long time ago.[1235.33][1235.33](APPLAUSE).
I guess I get away with that.
Thank you for coming down. Yes. We got to come and do the special.
Congratulations. Thank you for coming down. Yes. We got to come and do the special.
Thank you for coming down. Yes. We got to come and do the special.
Thank you for coming down. Yes. We got to come and do the special.
Thank you for coming down.
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 didn't ask any, do we have any of the teachers? And if there are any of the teachers of these students with us today, can you please stand as well? Any teachers here tonight? Or principals of these students? Principals? Congratulations. Dr. Jenkins.
Thank you, Chairman. I wouldn't miss an opportunity to publicly say how proud we are of our students, our children. And I tell you, from the time they're in kindergarten to walking across that stage is just the blink of an eye. And I know every parent is extremely proud. And you're probably wondering where the time went. A lot of that time for these students went into studying and staying up late some nights and going the extra mile. And that means they had a lot of parental support as well. And so congratulations to all of our students as well as to the parents. And thanks to Valencia and Dr. Lewis for being such strong partners, helping us get these students over the hurdle of an AA degree. It's certainly a tremendous accomplishment. We look forward to having even more in the future.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. And thank you for your leadership on this effort, Dr. Jenkins. It's growing not by accident, but because your administration has pushed it and this board has pushed it. Mrs. Robinson.
I just want to say, not only are these kids amazing, but our state is in good shape because I asked all of them where they were headed. And almost all of them are going to one of our fabulous schools here in the state of Florida. We had Stetson and Miami and UF, USF, UCF, FSU. We had Florida Gulf Coast. Yeah, we had a couple outliers. We had Ohio State and Howard. And those are just ones I'm remembering. But anyway, I think if they all are going to our wonderful schools here in the state of Florida and continuing their education, they're going to be wonderful employees coming back. So keep OCPS in mind when you come back. We will be here for you. Congratulations. You guys are all amazing. Very proud. Very proud.
So again, congratulations. You should be very, very proud of what you've accomplished. And you have such a tremendous head start on your peers, on your college education. And we're incredibly proud of you and how well you've made OCPS look. There's still time to go get ice cream tonight. So we're going to pause and let you leave and get back to the last night of your academic careers tonight. Welcome. And I would thank you again for coming down here. All right, board members. And Dr. Jenkins and Ms. Bobinski, thank you for setting that up. That was a very special recognition. I hope we do that every year. You know, I really like that we did that. So let me make a couple of preliminary announcements now that we're into our regular agenda. Any individual in the audience who would like to address an item on our consent or our non-consent agenda may do so by completing a yellow speaker card. It looks like this. You can obtain this yellow speaker card from Ms. McGill, who is the lady at the far left inside of the dais. And when that agenda item comes up, I will recognize you to speak. I will ask that you begin with your address for the record, please, which is a legal requirement. And then you will have three minutes to address the board. And we would welcome your comments. We do have a special guest with us tonight. I want to point out, board members, Mr. J.C. Benton. Mr. Benton, if you could raise your hand. Mr. Benton is down all the way from Columbus City Schools. He is the Board Services Supervisor up there. And I understand he went and visited Pinellas County Schools Board the other night. And now he's here to observe our proceedings. You picked a quiet night, Mr. Benton. That's probably a blessing.
Good for you guys.
Yeah. So thank you for coming and observing our proceedings tonight. They're not always as quick as we hoped tonight's maybe. But thank you for being here. We really appreciate it. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Jenkins to recognize our newly appointed administrators.
Thank you, Chairman. We have one. James Montgomery will be the new Assistant Principal at Apopka Elementary School.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Superintendent Dr. Jenkins and staff, Mr. Sublett and the OCPS School Board for giving me the opportunity to serve the city of Apopka and Apopka Elementary School. And as Assistant Principal, I'm grateful to have the opportunity to serve under the leadership of Principal Miller, who has been one of my instructional leaders. I'm honored to have the staff of Apopka Elementary here to support me tonight, as well as my children, Jamie, Jimmy, and Jonathan, in attendance to tonight, supporting me and supporting me in this newly appointed position for Orange County Public Schools. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Montgomery, on behalf of the board, we just want to say congratulations and thank you for all your service to our children and our community. I always like to tell newly appointed administrators that this appointment, your family and friends and colleagues should know signifies one very special word, and that word is trust. It means that this school board and this administration trust your judgment. It means that we trust your educational leadership abilities. And most importantly, it means that we trust you with the future of our community, our children. And for that, your loved ones and your family and colleagues should be extremely proud of you, as we are proud of you tonight. So congratulations. Dr. Jenkins.
So, James, it is okay to introduce the folks that are with you if you want to say, if you'd like to acknowledge that line of people supporting you?
All right. Thank you. I have Ms. Reynoso, who works at Apopka Elementary School, is one of our ELL support staff. Mrs. Chambers, one of our long-term music teachers. Ms. Paul Marini, along with her husband tonight, Mr. Paul Marini. Ms. Santiago, who's our pre-K teacher, has been many years at Apopka Elementary School, and our Principal Miller, and our family. And I'd also like to also thank Ms. Christine Moore for her support and influence of those schools in Apopka and also our school. So thank you.
Ms. Moore, I'm glad you showed up. You were able to get back. Ms. Moore.
I know. I was taking pictures with Apopka High School, Waukaia High School. But Mr. Montgomery, I met him the first time when he invited me over to be a judge for Modern Woodman. And he was great. He gave lots of gifts. And I was like wondering why you didn't invite me back, though. But no, we had a wonderful time yesterday. And I feel like I live at Apopka Elementary. I'm sure they feel like they're one of my favorites. But I'm sure we say that, you say that to all your children. But we certainly are. They, we spent the entire day yesterday together on our first little Apopka history trip. And they are just a great bunch. And Mrs. Paul Marini takes great care of me. When I go, I get coffee and water. And so, Mr. Montgomery, we are so happy. You were always, you always caught our eye when you were teaching and guidance counselor. And so, what a great thing to have you back at Apopka Elementary. It is really, you'll be a gift to that school. And Ms. Miller, I'm sure is glad to have you, as well as the rest of the staff. So congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Well, we do realize it's a school night, Mr. Montgomery. So it's the end of the semester as well. We know you have a lot on your plate. So feel free to leave if you'd like at this time. And Ms. Paul Marini, we just want to thank you for raising such a wonderful son. He's a tremendous asset for our legal department, and we appreciate him each and every day. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Montgomery. All right. Dr. Jenkins, do we have any changes to our agenda this evening?
No changes, Chairman.
All right. Seeing no changes, we don't need a motion to adopt the agenda. We've already done that. We are now on public hearings portion of the agenda. I don't believe we have any this evening. So we are now into the consent agenda. We do have one speaker tonight, a very special person, Ms. Wendy Darmal, who's going to talk about Agenda Item 4.01, which is, of course, Teacher Appreciation Week. Ms. Darmal, welcome.
Thank you. I want to thank you for recognizing and celebrating OCPS teachers during Teacher Appreciation Week. We all know that teachers are not in the classroom to get praise, but to make a difference. Teachers are superheroes. No ordinary person can infuse the love of learning into 20 or more diverse students without having superpowers. It takes an extraordinary person to work with limited resources, imperfect working conditions, and little pay to shape the future the way that teachers do. Teachers have the power to make imagination soar, see potential where no one else does, open minds, and change hearts. A teacher's influence extends far beyond the walls of a classroom, far beyond today into the future. Teachers deserve appreciation, gratitude, and respect, not just during Teacher Appreciation Week, but every day. Teachers give so much and ask for so little. CTA thanks you for your willingness to hear us, to meet with us, to work with us, to make improvements, and to consider our asks. We believe by continuing to work together, we can ensure that teachers are treated as valued professionals. So we can stop the exodus of teachers from OCPS, our district, and from our profession. Teachers deserve no less. They are truly superheroes. Thank you again for recognizing teachers.
Thank you for those kind words, Ms. Darmal, and for all of our teachers. Thank you. All right, board members. I don't have any other speakers on the consent agenda. Can I entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda? It's been moved by Mrs. Gordon, seconded by Ms. Flynn and Ms. Gould. Is there any debate or discussion of that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show the consent agenda adopted. We are on superintendent's report.
Thank you. I have three items. Number one, we are very proud and celebrating Orange Technical College. Last week, our students went to the State Skills USA competition, and they brought home 54 gold, 39 silver, 22 bronze, for a total of 115 medals. This was more medals than any other school in the state, and 31 more medals than we brought home last year. So congratulations to Orange Technical College and students and teachers. Mike Armbruster, stand up and wave.
That's the quietest I've ever heard you.
He's very proud, very proud. And I might mention, just so everyone's aware, we will have our first official Orange Technical College graduation, as our other schools have their own separate graduation. No more separate campuses. One big graduation at Amway Arena. We're very proud of Orange Technical College. Number two, this is our second year going through our school day offering of the SAT. If you remember back when we first started talking about it, I indicated that we would expect to see a slight drop because you are pushing more students into the opportunity of taking the SAT. But we were willing to make that investment in our students. And then we really pushed for participation in Khan Academy because the research is growing that that participation increases scores. So the total number of students taking the assessment increased from 11,730 to 12,265. The good news is, we have a five-point increase in the scores for the ERW portion, reading and writing portion of the SAT. That is a higher increase than the state, who increased by four points. Three schools, East River, Evans, and Cypress Creek, increased their average ERW score by 10 points or more. For the mathematics portion, we increased our score by three points. That is higher than the state's increase by two points. Four schools, Colonial, East River, Ocoy, and West Orange, increased their math, average math score from, I'm sorry, increased their average math score by 10 points or more. So we're very proud of our students, and we'll continue to push that partnership. In fact, when you approved your consent agenda, it made a provision for an even stronger partnership with Khan Academy and College Board. Number three, I wanted to just commend our high school team. 209 of our teachers received personal framed letters last week from high school seniors. We've said over and over again, and it's a great time to remind folks during Teacher Appreciation Week, when our students walk across that stage, they really represent all of their teachers, from pre-K all the way to 12th grade. While high school has the lion's share of getting them across the finish line, every teacher plays a role. And so our students, this is a tradition that had been carried out at Freedom High School under Dr. Border previously. And so he, once he became chief of high schools, brought it to all of our high schools. And so 209 letters were selected from our seniors that were graduating and framed and hand-delivered by teams that went out to 57 different schools. I mean, and the shock and the surprise, I went with one team. I went with Dr. Border. I don't believe there was, there was maybe one that didn't just start crying at the notion of a letter when we read it to them. A kindergarten teacher, an art teacher, a fourth-grade math teacher, a science teacher, middle school and elementary teachers who had had an impact on those students' lives. And they wrote very heartwarming letters, and we delivered those to 209 teachers. We will increase it and grow it next year. We had teachers say, "This makes my entire year compared to the other things that I've done this year. This is the absolute best thing that I've seen all year." And most of them were tearful, understandably. And I will tell you, they remembered those students who wrote to them. And students said things like, "You made learning fun. You made me accountable. When it was tough, you worked with me. You helped me." Very significant trends in those letters that high school students wrote as they're seniors and preparing to graduate. And so it was a wonderful event. If you saw some of the clips, you saw the tissues coming out for folks when they were surprised with those letters. But I want to commend the high school team and all of our high school principals for helping put that together for our teachers. It was a great event, a great week. And we are rolling down the track, getting ready now for graduation. This was the final day for our seniors, as they are preparing. Certainly want to encourage parents and family members to keep an eye on them until we get to our actual graduation ceremonies. But congratulations to all of our high school graduates.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. What an inspiring report. Ms. Cadel.
The other thing that I have seen happen that people were really excited about, I know, I know that some of the elementary schools for years have invited former students back for receptions and going back to the elementary school. But this year, I think it was happening in multiple schools. But the graduates from East River High School were in their caps and gowns and went back to their home schools, their elementary schools. And the children had signs for Class of 2017, "Congratulations." The kids were smiling on the bus. Like the superintendent said, there wasn't a dry eye with a lot of the teachers who remembered the children. And I just thought that was a really nice touch for the children in those feeder elementary that are going into high schools to see what they have to look forward to. So there have just been so many exciting things that have been happening with the high school division, the AP Scholars event. And just, I think it's so important to recognize the success and also to thank the people who helped along the way. So hats off to, I know it takes a lot of people to get it done, but hats off to all who have worked so hard on that.
Thank you, Ms. Cadel. Great, great, great comments. All right. General Counsel's report. General Counsel.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, so back again, because it's been two weeks. And can I give you an update? Yes, I think we are. Mayor Cole was going to appear and give you the latest update himself because he wanted to, he just met this morning with Scott Fish, who leads Up Development. Where we last left this saga was, they were at 14 million, Up Development was. And the original bid was at 18 and a half million. That creates a sizable difference between what was bid and what is now being offered. The town and Up Development, however, continue to be in negotiations. And the town has again requested another two weeks because they do feel like they're making progress. I see no reason to deny them at this point because simply they, they are advancing the cause, however slowly this may feel. But there are some potential solutions. And I'm hopeful in the next two weeks, they will get this under contract. He also has to bring it back to his board, so he, or his council, so there is that complication as well. But so unless there's any objection, I want to report back to the mayor that the board is amenable to another two weeks. Okay. And let me just add that on the agenda today, you've approved the hiring of a new attorney, Sarah Kapeski, who really replaces Mr. Brooks, who started off with us a few years ago. Mr. Brooks was promoted last year to Attorney Two. And this year, with Carrie Anne Reggio leaving us as the EOC officer, he is now taking over those duties. So he'll have a slash after his name next year when we do the reorg file. But Ms. Kapeski is a former teacher. She interned in our office. So we lose Amy Enval, who becomes the General Counsel as a former teacher. But I thought we had such great success with her track record, her understanding. And Sarah is a local product who has gone to local law school here and will do great things. She interned two semesters. So we like the fact that she's already familiar with the organization. Had a couple of very good candidates, and I'm proud to have her on the board. And I think at the next meeting, you'll see a replacement for Ms. Enval as our new transactional lawyer to support the chief of operations and some of our other divisions. So we hope to have that announcement at the next board meeting. So replenishing the stock of supply. Some of our folks have left for very good reasons. We're very proud of them. But I think we're making some very good hires. Thank you.
It's a tribute to your department, too, Mr. Rodriguez, that we're seeding other districts around the state, which means they're coming to us because they like what you're producing. So congratulations. All right. Committee reports. We have, I understand, Ms. Flynn on legislative.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Nothing happening up there, is there?
Ms. Cobert and I are going to give this jointly. But I am going to try very hard to not be snide. It might be a little bit hard. But the legislature, the 2017 legislative session ended yesterday, not necessarily on a good note for public education. Eileen Fernandez and Cody Woody, who are our legislative liaisons, put together a summary and sent it to every board member. So you have this. But I am going to just highlight a couple of items, and then Ms. Cobert will tag, tag me. We had a budget session last week. And so we already knew the depressing news that the budget wasn't going to be very good for us. And it sure isn't. So our increase will be slightly 0.4%, which equates to $28.39 per student. Where we've got a decrease basically of $151 from the 2007, 2008 year. So that's not really good. The big disappointment was the train bill that ended up being 200, over 250 pages, and has everything but the kitchen sink in it. And so there are some good elements. I'm not going to say that there aren't. For instance, the recess option for the parents who work so hard was included in that. So all students will have a requirement similar to what we passed as policy, except it is exempt for charter schools. Okay. VAM, which I thought was going, the VAM, the value-added model in the teacher evaluation, I'm not sure of the status here. I thought it was out, but then it said, rather than eliminate it, they're going to authorize a study.
Now, VAM is optional.
VAM is optional? Okay. Got to look at that. Algebra II EOC is eliminated. Sunscreen, no, I'm serious. Sunscreen now, I guess, can be taken to school without a doctor's note. But let me say, sunscreen is actually on the FDA list of over-the-counter drugs. So I understand that our policy, because it's listed as an over-the-counter drug, is that there is still some restrictions on how a student can use it. But it's included. But it's included, it's included in here. So, the really tough things, in regard to charter schools, charter schools came out very favorable in this. I'm just going to give a very quick recap. For instance, all of us remember our appeal of the Orange County government's approval of allowing a charter school to be just across the street from ours. Well, in this bill, now, they're able to bypass any land use or zoning requirements of local jurisdictions.
So, are you siding with us?
No. So, this preempts the authority of local jurisdictions. So, you know, not only do the school boards get slapped around a little bit, but so do the local governments. So, just wanted to give you that. Of course, there's the School of Hope, which would allow certain charters to come in from out of state to receive favored status, that if there is a failing school, and they've got criteria for that, the charter can come in, of course, they don't have any, you know, no restrictions, come in just like that, within a five-mile radius. Or if a building is open, an empty school facility, they're able to take that. Now, it does not give any kind of requirements that they would have to enroll all of the students in the so-called failing school. So, there is $250 million associated with those Schools of Hope. They, they threw a bone, or a chicken wing, for the public schools, because they said, Deborah, don't make me laugh. So, they said that, okay, you know, that's a good idea, let's, let's let the districts apply and, and compete for that $250 million. So, 25 schools across the state might, out of 4,200, will have the opportunity to apply for that. So, here's one. Now, we'll allow those Hope charters, now, remember, these Hopes, Schools of Hope, and again, I'm trying very hard not to be snide, but the School of Hope schools are supposed to come in and fix, fix the failing areas, fix the, the situation that these kids are in. But this bill allows Hope charters to hire uncertified teachers and administrators. Okay. So, that Title I funding, of course, will be distributed to the, the districts in a different way. Right now, we get the lump sum, and the superintendent and the board were able to decide where we want to put those. Now, there's going to be more restriction on how we use that. And I believe that there are some very important programs that we have funded under that Title I monies that will be at risk of being eliminated. I could go on and on, but I won't, because I'm getting, I'm getting upset. So, it's not, the, the only hope we have is...
(inaudible).
Right, right. Is if the governor would veto this. Now, there were some senators who said, "This is not a good bill, and we're going to come back and try to change some of it." And I don't know why they couldn't have done it right then and there, but they didn't. I did want to say, Fund Education Now, which is an advocacy organization, has a alert button that you can press, and you're able to send letters. So, just through that one organization, 43,000 letters were sent to senators saying, "Please, look, look at this, this is what this, this impact could have." Out of those 43, one of the senators, because I was listening to this on, on their Florida Channel, said, "Well, it was a form letter, one person wrote a letter, sent it all out, so that 43,000 didn't apparently represent anything to that person." She picked out one letter that she had received from a teacher who was, who said they should vote for it. So, that one letter out of 43,000 made a difference to her. I don't think I can go on. So, it's, it's not good, it's not good. I didn't even talk about the fact that we now have to share some of our local capital funding, not, not the half cent, but the local required effort with charter schools now. That's it, for me.
All right. Ms. Cobert.
I, I think you gave a good summation, Mrs. Flynn. This has been extraordinarily difficult for, for public schools this year. The couple of things that I'd like to point out for the public, one of the things that has made this very difficult is that our state legislature, legislature circumvented a process that we have in place for the public to give input. And they took a series of many pieces of legislation, many bills, and at the 11th hour, literally, crammed them all into one bill, 278 pages of amendments, with giving no time for anyone to be able to read, digest, or give public input on the process. And I think that's an abomination. This is our legislature, elected by the people, for the people, and we have serious issues with the way things were done this year. The budget is really frightening for public schools. Orange County Public Schools will be funded at approximately $7152 per student for the year, which is $151 less than we were funded per student 10 years ago. And as you can imagine, with the increases in medical costs, utilities, fuel, that will make it very difficult for us not only to meet our obligations, but to take care of our employees and to educate our students in the manner in which they deserve. And it's the state's obligation to do that under the Constitution. The many advocacy organizations around the state, as Ms. Flynn mentioned, Fund Education Now, the Alliance for Public Schools, the Florida PTA, these organizations are urging the governor to veto both the conforming bill and the budget. So, there, there are some of us who will join in that ask, but behind that, we have to begin now to do everything we can to try to repair this damage and plan for next year's legislative session. And we really need everyone's help to do that. So, I believe, Ms. Flynn, you had talked about asking for a special work session.
Go ahead. Mr. Chair. And it wouldn't be a special, every year, we do have a wrap-up from our legislative liaisons that debrief us on the, on all the legislation that is passed that will impact us. And so, what I'm asking of the chairman is if we could schedule that work session a little bit sooner than we usually do, maybe early June, and then we can also have a legislative committee meeting to start talking about our platform for next year, and then we could work with the Communications Committee to bring back a plan. But I think it's, it's worth, because this was just one bill. There's other items that passed or didn't pass that we should all be aware of. So, I did, I did, yes, I did, thank you for reminding me. I had it down here.
And one, one last thing, I do want to publicly commend Eileen Fernandez and Cody Woody for their work during this session. They showed great commitment to our students and a high, the highest level of work ethic. They have been in touch with us on a daily basis, through the weekend, into the evenings and early mornings, truly, for the past two weeks straight, and have just showed great dedication to our students, and I want to commend them here tonight.
Let me hear what the rest of the board members have to say, but I would like us to do that work session in any event before we get to that July 1 date, where, you know, many of us are out of town. So, we'll get that, we'll get that agenda, and frankly, we'll, if we can find a date in May, we'll even shoot for May, sooner rather than better. Dr. Jenkins, did you want to say something before I go to Ms. Gould?
I did, Chairman. I, I wanted to just make a couple of comments. Number one, I would certainly commend Cody and Eileen, and also, Mr. Howitt, who actually commandeered our efforts and was in constant contact with our legislative liaisons. And so, they did do a yeoman's job. I don't want them to feel somehow discouraged or defeated. But, and I also want to, I don't know if board member Flynn mentioned this, but I wanted to commend also our local delegation. We had, we made some calls, and the chairman assisted with some contact. I want to thank publicly Linda Stewart, Senator Linda Stewart, Senator Victor Torres, and Senator Randy Bracy, because they did vote no. And, and I was going to say, while he's not our local delegation, he has always been a friend to public education, and each time we've spoken with Senator Simmons, he's been very supportive, and he voted no as well. And so, we want to publicly thank our local delegation. We just kind of include Senator Simmons as part of our local delegation. The sad thing is, and I'm very proud of what our local delegation did, because some of my peers had senators from their area that they thought they had a commitment for or from, and then it changed at the last minute. That bill would have failed with one additional no vote. And so, it was very discouraging to some who thought they had some commitments. I understand the political process has to play its way through to the finish, don't count them until the votes are actually conveyed, but very disappointing for those involved. If you look at the numbers, the likelihood of overriding a veto is much higher for the budget, if you look at the numbers, than the ability to override is much greater there. And so, our organization is probably looking more at the conforming bill as a potential for veto, because the vote was so close, they would have a hard time trying to override a veto with the governor. But strategies continue to be compiled and compared as we speak, I'm certain. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. Ms. Gould.
I just think there's a, a couple of other things to, to point out, just for points of fact, so people understand impact on this. And, and some things that we're puzzling in a time where we're in a state of high economic and fundamental growth with population. People may not realize that in, in Florida, we have 187,000 more students than we did in 2007 and '08, and yet, our, our dollars are going down. And then, you know, the, the required local effort was rolled back in a time of growth, and that, and I, and I did not hear, especially in our community, a cry out to do that, that I hear a cry to invest more in project-based learning, more in digital curriculum, more in 21st, 22nd century facility designs. I'm not hearing roll back our investment in education, which is in fact what happened. So, and I, and in talking to colleagues and people I know in other districts, they're hearing the same things from their communities. So, it just seems at odds, not only from an educational perspective, but if you're lucky enough to be one of the states that is in the leading growth of economic development, trying to attract high-tech industry and open up broad international ports, that you would want to invest less in your education, you'd want to invest more so that you can attract those corporate headquarters here. So, it's, it's a very thick bill. The summary itself is thick, because they did throw so much into one bill, it became, I don't know if it was an official train, but it sure looks like a train, of things that just kept getting added and piled on. And it does make it a little bit confusing from both the, the true investment side in our children, but in the economic development side, it's just kind of mind-boggling to me.
Ms. Moore.
This reminds me of the parent trigger bill about four years ago, except there we won. We were able to prevail, and this time, we, we lost by one vote. But I think when you put some of the, the outcomes together, the way the Title I funding was changed, the really lack of reduction in testing, and we thought, I mean, just rolling back, Algebra II, you know, really didn't add up to what was promised. And, and then you look at the Schools of Hope, that whole process and procedure that was put into place, and you look at some of the news releases that came out saying this was the greatest amount of education reform since the A++ Plan. So, it was very apparent that it was meant to be revolutionary, it was meant to be a game changer. And so, when you put all those things together, I think that when we have our work session, the schools that we have to be the most, most concerned about are Title I schools, because the funding's been cut for them, and the penalties have gotten greater. And I, I'm sure you all feel the same way, I just can't imagine sitting in this seat and thinking, "One of my schools ended up being taken by an out, out-of-town charter." That's just, just something that would be difficult, I think, for any of us to bear. But all, a lot of the aspects of this train bill, I think, are going to be particularly hard in that population of students. So, I know Dr. Jenkins has a great staff, and I think that's where we're going to have to be particularly attuned to making sure that we don't have any schools that are hitting that DNF. We just, we just can't allow that to happen. I just, you know, I spent the whole day yesterday on my little history tour and building community, and having the children love where they are, and understanding government, and, you know, being part of making a successful city. How are you going to do that if this school belongs to this management company, and this one belongs to this one, and this one belongs to the one from, from Tennessee? That is just the opposite of everything that we've been trying to do. So, I know we'll do it with this great board, great staff, when we see whether the veto, whether we can get a veto or not, then we're obviously going to have to go back to the drawing board with a particular lens on our schools that are going to be the most vulnerable. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Flynn.
Mr. Chair, that was actually from before, but I will, I will tell you, it was interesting listening to the debate talks from the different senators. Senator Farmer, and I think he's from South Florida area, or plantation, I might be getting it mixed up, but he was very eloquent, I thought, in his opposition to this bill. And, and he made a comment that stuck with me. He said, "If our schools, if the system is failing," he goes, "It's because we put them there, we've done it to them." This sort of picking over, you know, starving the, starving the schools, making these mandates on them, changing it. And so, I thought that was very interesting. And I think, too, the discussion has really come out, that it's not just that it's a charter school, it's not just that it's a high accountability. He actually used the word privatizing public education. And so, I think there is a lot that's being openly revealed by some of these so-called reforms. So, it was, it was very interesting, and it's very disheartening, but I believe in public education and why it's a positive for a community to have it, and so, we just can't give up.
Mrs. Robinson.
I wanted to point out for folks who might be listening or watching on this, two things. One, if someone knows the exact date, if we could get that out there, that, that the governor has to, how much time we have for the governor to veto this? It's two weeks, but does he have to do it in two weeks, or can he do it tomorrow? Or, so, somebody could explain that process to me, so we know how much time we have to get people engaged to go to the, to go to the governor. So, I'd like to hear that from somebody who's an expert on that, or knows, Mr. Soblet, I'm sure you know the answer, if you'd tell that in a minute. And then, my other thing is, I wanted to point out to everyone, too, that session this year begins in January, doesn't go all the way to March, so that means committee actually starts in October. Is it September?
I think September.
September, October, so we're in a shorter timeframe than we normally have to get ourselves organized. Starts in, starts in January instead of March, because it's an election year. So, we're really in a crunch time to get, to get ourselves together to be proactive before next session. So, I just want to point that out for all of us. But I'm in agreement with everything, we've just got to keep, keep fighting. Thank you.
Ms. Cadel.
It looks like Mr. Howitt's coming up to answer that one question. It looks like Mr. Howitt's coming up to answer that one question.
Mr. Howitt?
Sure. The governor has 15 days from the time it's presented to him in order to sign veto. If the 15 days expires, then it just goes into law without his signature.
I guess my question is, he could sign it today if he wanted to.
Well, if it's presented to him. I don't know that it's been presented to him. It has to be enrolled, and then it'll be presented to him.
So the sooner we get our...
And it starts ticking once it's put on his desk.
Right. Okay. So we need to get all of our emails and letters and everything we want to him quickly.
I know that Eileen and Cody have been working on that.
Thank you.
Sure.
Can he individually line item things out?
He can. When it comes to the conforming bill, he cannot. It's up or down on the conforming bill. But the budget, he can. He can take out very specific.
So are all the home projects in the conforming bill?
No, they're in the budget. They're in the...
So he could, he could, he could take some of the special projects that different people traded for and line item out?
Um, this governor's been very good at making sure he trims the budget with the line item veto.
That's what I remember from previous years. Well, no, but you got to start somewhere. Um, so I turned my light on because this board is in a very enviable, enviable position compared to many of our neighbors. We have two things going for us. Number one, the voters, not once, but twice, approve the half penny sales tax. I had the opportunity to go to Gainesville for a committee meeting and went to Buchholz High School. No offense to Alachua County, but Buchholz looks like the schools were totally knocking down and rebuilding. I mean, it is that old construction that, and they don't have any way to modernize or upgrade their buildings. We're fortunate, because we have the half penny to continue to build schools, renovate schools, and we promised the voters back in 2002 that we would do capital renewal, too, so that these buildings would not look like they did in 2002. And Mr. Morris and his team has been, have been great at going back and getting those air conditioners, painting those buildings, making sure, you know, the different things that need to be done to show the community that this is important to us and it is of value. But then add to that, not once, but twice, this community has added the one mil to our property tax bill, so that the children in this district can have high-quality academic programs. We continue to offer arts, music in, in all of our schools. We have extracurricular activities. We have high academic programs we're offering, and that's because the voters of this county said, "Our children are important. We want them to have a really good education." So I feel like we'd be remiss if we did not, once again, thank the voters for making our job a little bit easier, because some of the cuts that you're going to hear being considered throughout the state, we probably are not going to have to look at, because we have that extra funding. So, um, I wouldn't be able to put my pillow on, my head on the pillow tonight if I didn't thank the voters, um, for all that they've done to help the children in Orange County Public Schools.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Cadle. Well, you know, I'll echo that. Thank you, voters. And I will, you know, assure anybody watching this or anybody out there in the audience that this board is committed to not cutting any academic programs, not cutting any athletic programs, not cutting any art or music programs. Uh, and that's only possible because of that special mileage that the voters have voted in for us twice to preserve high-quality academic programs, athletic, um, cultural programs, music programs, and also to retain high-performing teachers. So we're not planning on any teacher cuts as well, or any staff cuts either, but that's only because of the voters of Orange County. So, um, we haven't done our budget yet, but I have repeatedly assured folks in the last week, as I've spoken, because it's come up a number of times, that because of the voters and the electorate, we don't anticipate those type of cuts. The real victims in this, though, are our hard-working teachers and our support personnel, because frankly, uh, we have a teacher shortage in the state of Florida. We have a teacher shortage in the United States. We have a teacher shortage in Orange County. It's getting harder and harder to retain teachers because of the environment that they are compelled to teach in. Uh, and yet this is a giant step backwards, because it just exacerbates the problem even worse. So I've also been telling folks that sadly, the victims in all this are our teachers and our folks who make our schools run and operate safely every day, everybody from our security staff to our bus drivers to our cafeteria workers. And the irony there is just tragic to me, uh, because, you know, everything I will share with you all, and I'll say it from up here, I don't know how many people are listening or watching, not a lot, but I've also been telling folks the last week, because I really do believe this, that this is solely, um, naked political ambition that drove this conforming bill, and it's one individual in the Florida House, the Speaker, who is determined to ram this through, um, through the point of threats and, um, cajole-ry of his membership. Um, I've talked to so many House members who really were not in support of the House's position, but they were threatened and they were arm-twisted, and it's a shame that, that it's come to that, that public schools and neighborhood schools and K-12 public education has become a political football. And the last thing that I'll say, and then I'll be quiet, because I think all of us can go on forever about this, is what frustrates me especially, and it started in last year's, uh, national campaign, is this narrative thread that's become prevalent, that public schools are failing by any objective measure, whether it's NAEP scores, whether it's PISA scores, whether it's SAT ACT scores, whether it's in Florida, FSA scores, whether it's closing achievement gaps, whether it's graduation rates, I can go on and on and on. American public education is not failing. It's certainly not failing in Orange County, Florida. We're a community where parents of all socioeconomic levels, including parents who can afford to pay private school tuition, still make the neighborhood public school their number-one school of choice, and still choose overwhelmingly neighborhood public schools. And we're very, very proud of that. We're not unique in that respect either. We're, I think, we're, we live in a special community, but I think I could say the same for literally dozens of other districts in the state of Florida. And by the way, neither are Americans, America's urban schools failing. That became the narrative thread that got me so frustrated during the last campaign, is somehow our urban schools are failing dropout factories. I mean, it was almost something out of the 1960s to hear it spoken over and over again on the campaign trail. And again, it's not just my opinion. Look at the data. Look at the graduation rate data. Look at the test scores. Look at whatever objective data you choose to look at. Um, America's public schools are succeeding, um, and the competition has been good for us, and we welcome the competition. On a level playing field, we'll, we'll take on anybody, anybody, any organization, any school, and, and we're not afraid of competition. We have, I think, last count, 33, 34 charter schools in Orange County, and, and we're very, very proud of some of our high-performing charter schools. And they've made us better, and they've made us much better, and they've made us raise our game, and that's good. But, um, the sad thing to me about this is, again, the theme that somehow our public schools are failing when, when they're not. So enough said. Um, I know all of us can go on about it. We're all equally frustrated, but it's a shame, and I just hope that the voters don't lose sight of what made this happen at the end of the day. Mrs. Robinson?
Um, I just wanted to add kind of to that, since you're talking about our schools doing so well. Um, I wanted to let everyone know, I, I've been serving for the last 10 years on the board for the Page 15, um, which is part of Urban Think Foundation, and it's a nonprofit that does, encourages reading and writing literacy for predominantly our students in the inner city. And this past year, every year, they've been doing for the last three or four years, um, putting together, they always have summer writing camps, and they've been, um, putting out competitions of writing competitions for our high schoolers. And they put together every year an anthology, and this year, um, they, they receive hundreds of applicants, their students submitting, um, pieces of work, and they select 15 of them. And of the 15 students selected for this year's one, it's called "From Orlando With Love." It was inspired by the Paltz tragedy from last year. Um, 10 of the 15 students selected, because they do Orange, Osceola, and Seminole when they send out the applications, 10 of them are Orange County students in here, and of those, seven, seven schools are representative of those 10, seven of our high schools. It's really, really, um, wonderful. The students, you know, students always seem to see things so much, sometimes almost better than we do. So I just wanted to tell you all about this. I, it, it impressed me very much, um, it impresses me every year when they do it, but this year in particular, just because of the, the heart of the kids and, um, the Orlando community is, is seen in this book, and I just want to share that with you all. So way to go, kids.
By the way, Page 15 is a great organization. My own daughter has taken writing classes at Page 15 in their summer writing program. Ms. Cadle?
Well, and I don't have all the information in front of me, but I'm going to put a plug in for the Dr. Phillips Performing Arts Center's Applause Awards. They are coming on Sunday, June the 4th, and I wish I could tell you, everyone in Orange County who got them, but I happen to know that University High School received, I, I can't remember if it's 25 or 26 Applause Awards, from everything from technical design to directing to, you name it, they're, they've gotten them. So it's a wonderful evening to see our children perform on the stage, and it's, they go all the way, there's sometimes children from Brevard County, Polk County, Osceola, Orange, Seminole, private schools. So it's just a really exciting night to recognize the great work that are going on in our performing arts department. So I've got my ticket already. I can't wait. So, um, if anyone else wants to join me that night, it's a fun night to see, um, our, our performers and our teachers and our directors and our, our orchestra directors all being recognized for the great work that they do.
Thank you. Well, with that, anything else for the good of the order board members?
Anything else for the good of the order board members? All right. We are adjourned.